Good evening and welcome to the January 13, 2025 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one item up for discussion, but it's a big one. We're going to talk about the, uh, our involvement in the Commission on Common Ownership Communities, or CCOC, and to lead us in the discussion, we have our Assistant City Manager, Tom Honor-Gonsega, our Assistant City Attorney, Eric Perla, and our Neighborhood Services Division Manager, Sebastian Andion. Take it away, Tom.
I'm actually going to turn it immediately over to Sebastian, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. This presentation explores the city of Gathersburg's options regarding its participation with the Commission on Common Ownership Communities, CCOC. Will examine current operations, potential alternatives, and key considerations for the chosen path forward. A little bit of background, the CCOC was established in 1990 by Montgomery County Council. When operating effectively, the CCOC provides training services, financial assistance, outreach to boards, governance regulation, and dispute resolution for the common ownership communities. The city of Gathersburg joined in 2021. The original cost to each city COC household was $5. This fee schedule remains in effect until the end of fiscal year 25. A little bit of financial overview, the CCOC's fiscal year 25 approved budget is $1,978,783, and it breaks down as follows. Salaries, $909,405, supporting seven full-time employees. Revenue of $998,378, generated at $6.50 per participating household across the county, with $5 contributed per household from the city. The city's contribution to the CCOC breaks down in the following way. There are 69 condominium associations and 43 homeowners associations, for a total of 112 COCs, which include 485 households. Revenue at $5 per household would be a total of $70,425 annually, if all communities were to participate. The actual revenue based on current participation is approximately $49,770, based on 69.73 participation. The city's initial agreement with the CCOC was that the registration fees would begin and remain at $5 per household through the fiscal year 25.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Um, and back at the last slide, um, is the number of household participants, is that a hard number? Do we, do we, do we know that for sure? How did we get that? Do we get that number from CCOC?
Yes, I got those numbers from, directly from the CCOC.
Okay, thank you.
Is it elective? I thought it was compulsory.
It's not. It is compulsory. They're, um, actually now, I was gonna get into this a little bit later, but now that they're fully staffed, they are working on ensuring that every, uh, community is now participating.
Thank you.
As I said, the current fee for the city is $5, which ends on 6/30/2025. It would then increase to the current CCOC rate, which is $6.50, which would equate to an increase of 30%. DHCA, which oversees the CCOC, is also considering a possible increase in this fee for all of its CCOC members for fiscal year 26. However, that decision and what effect, what the exact fee change has not been determined. The CCOC has agreed to inform me as soon as decision is made. And the previous increase the CCOC made was in fiscal year 17, when it was at $5 for every member. So the original reasons for joining the CCOC. The city chose to participate in this affordable program with the best intentions for its COCs, driven by the following reasons. To provide dispute resolution without court involvement. For COCs to have access and training and resources for common ownership communities. And to consolidate enforcement, education, and assistance under one framework. So what are the CCOC concerns that brought us here today? It's, there's the identified ineffective inter-agency communication, where the coordination between agencies was identified as an area needing improvement to ensure timely and effective resolution of COC, I'm sorry, of COC concerns. The witness and acknowledged staffing issues. When joined, they initially had insufficient staffing levels, resulting in prolonged case resolutions, backlogs, and limited availability for proactive engagement and response to its jurisdictions. The unsatisfactory resolution of complaints due to the confusion understanding why certain city cases were cited under lack of jurisdiction. The issue of lack of jurisdiction has been a recurring concern when it comes to CCOC resolutions. In trying to clarify this designation, I want to share what I've learned through research and discussions with the CCOC. When any case is designated as lack of jurisdiction, it means that after a thorough review by a CCOC inspector, there was no reasonable grounds found to conclude that a violation of applicable laws or association documents occurred. This decision is not arbitrary. An investigator reviews the initial complaint, conducts a comprehensive assessment, and then makes a recommendation to the CCOC commission. This recommendation is further reviewed with the assistance of the county attorney. It's also important to understand that this is a jurisdictional criteria under Chapter 10B of the county code. The CCOC's authority is limited to specific types of disputes such as governance issues, improper elections, and architectural control matters. If a case falls outside these defined categories, it is dismissed as lack of jurisdiction. Therefore, whether it's city or any other CCOC case designated this way, it is because it didn't meet the established criteria and not because it was, it wasn't investigated or reviewed. Next, I'd like to touch base on a few of the CCOC current program updates. Over the past eight months, the CCOC has instituted several updates to address past concerns raised by its members and enhance the services it provides. They have a new common area assistant loan fund for members has, um, to provide financial support for CCOCs, including condominium associations, cooperatives, co-ops, and homeowners associations wanting to enhance common areas or experiencing financial hardship for enhancements or repairs. This fund is designated to assist its members in addressing immediate health or safety repairs as documented by professional assessments or government citations. They've had staff expansion with the addition of a manager and an investigator to help expedite case resolutions. The CCOC is now fully staffed with seven full-time employees, ensuring better support and faster responses for its members. They have additional funding initiatives to offer financial assistance to distressed COCs. They've improved their response time, which has been achieved by allocating dedicated resources to reduce case processing times, resulting in a more efficient complaint resolution. They also have a new educational outreach, expanding training programs aimed at improving governance and operational effectiveness for its COCs. Next, I would like to go over city case statistics for the CCOC. I have all the data on 2024, but first I want to provide a brief history. Starting in 2021, there were two cases. In 2022, there were six cases. In 2023, there were four cases, for a total of 12 cases during that time period. Last year in 2024, there were a total of 13 cases, which is an increase over 8% over the past three years. The cases for 2024 were as follows. There was one case where mediation took place on 12/30/2024. I'm still waiting the final outcome of that case. There, there were two cases where the complaints were withdrawn and the cases were closed. There were three cases that were closed after investigation determined no violations. There were three cases resolved after a successful mediation, and there were two cases unresolved after mediation, and they're going before the commission. They are currently coordinating with all the parties to schedule them. And there were, have been two new cases open in the past 30 days and are currently in the initial investigative process. I also would like to offer a more specific breakdown of the cases the city had in 2024. There was one dispute over damage charges. It was a case involving disagreement over financial responsibility for property damage. There was one election results dispute with a challenge to the outcome or process of elections within the COC. I'm sorry, the C, yup, COC. There was one failure to repair damage to the unit, a situation where repairs to the unit were not completed or addressed by the responsible party. There were two architectural and maintenance issues. There were disputes related to modifications, maintenance, or compliance with architectural standards. There were two common area issues, cases concerning shared spaces and responsibilities for their upkeep or usage. And there were three failures to conduct or call meetings. Basically, instances where meetings were not held as required by association rules or bylaws.
Hey, Sebastian?
Yes?
Out of the 13 complaints, are there 13 different communities to? Is it one community with 13 complaints or 13 communities with one? Like generally the distribute, without naming any, you know?
Yeah, um, I don't have the exact figures. I didn't break it down that way. Um, I can get that to you.
Yeah.
But it was, it wasn't all just from one community.
Okay, so it wasn't like a pattern or?
No.
One bad actor?
Not that I noticed, no.
Thank you.
And then there were three improper assessment fee complaints, allegations of incorrect or unfair assessment fees charged to residents. Next, we will move on to potential options. As mentioned, the CCOC has implemented changes to address prior inefficiencies, including increased staffing, reduced case processing times, and expanded training resources. However, this body must weigh whether these updates sufficiently resolve the initial concerns that brought us to this discussion. If option one is selected to stay with the CCOC, ongoing monitoring will be essential to ensure sustained progress and responsiveness to city-specific needs. Staying with the CCOC ensures that city COC members maintain access to dispute resolution services, comprehensive board support. And this support includes governance assistance by drafting and updating bylaws and government documents, conducting board meetings and compliance with regulations, promoting transparency and accountability in decision-making, operational guidance, setting up and managing budgets or financial practices, overseeing maintenance, repairs, and contracts. They have an integrated service model that offers a comprehensive centralized framework that consolidates dispute resolution, training, and governance support under one program. Also would like to note that the Neighborhood Services has not received any reports of new concerns regarding the CCOC services over the past seven months. Some of the key features. When fully functioning as intended, the CCOC delivers centralized services such as training, governance, technical, financial assistance to its boards, and mediation or dispute resolution to its members. All at a relative, relatively low cost to each city household. Next is option two, opting out without a replacement. The implications of opting out without establishing a replacement program. There would be no centralized support. If the city opts out, residents would need to hire legal counsel or engage in third-party mediators for COC disputes. Without the CCOC framework, resolutions would likely require costly and time-consuming court proceedings, placing a heavier burden on residents to navigate these challenges independently. However, there is historical precedent. Before the city joined the CCOC in 2021, there was no accessible or centralized framework for the city's COCs to have dispute resolution. This led to inconsistencies, inefficiencies, and inequities among our CCOCs. Opting out without a replacement essentially reverts the city to that previous state, leaving COC residents without a structured system to address governance or operational issues. There would be a small cost savings. While opting out would eliminate the $5 per household fee currently contributing to the CCOC, this modest reduction in costs comes with a trade-off. Residents would lose access to a centralized dispute resolution and resources, potentially facing higher individual costs for private legal counsel or mediation. Without a replacement program, inequities among COCs may grow as residents and communities with limited governance structures or resources could struggle to address disputes effectively. This would leave residents without the support they currently have access to. Option three is to explore alternative third-party resources to the CCOC. First, we have the Montgomery County COC training for COC boards, including non-members. The CCOC does provide free training programs and resources for community association boards, even if they are not members. The cost impact to the boards would be none. There's the Montgomery County CRCMC, Conflict Resolution Center of Montgomery County. It offers dispute resolution through mediation, but requires mutual agreement between parties. It also does not provide a binding resolution. The cost impact to the residents would be none. While free, this option does require a mutual agreement between the parties, which may limit its effectiveness for contentious disputes. The Maryland State Attorney General could potentially handle cases for dispute resolution that typically is limited to broader consumer protection issues. The cost impact to residents would be none. There's the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. It does provide information on the rights and responsibilities of individuals living common ownership communities. It can serve as a helpful resource for residents and boards to understand their roles and legal obligations, but it does not offer mediation or dispute resolution. The cost impact to residents would also be none. And then there is the Community Associations Institute, also known as the CAI. It does provide training and resources for COC boards. It does not offer dispute resolution or enforcement. The CAI offers resources and training for community association boards, including membership options and board leader certificate courses. The cost impact to COC boards would be moderate. I do have those membership costs if you'd like to hear them.
Sure.
Okay. Individual board members is 115 per year. A group membership of two or more board members is 260 per year. Membership provides access to educational materials, networking opportunities, and industry updates. The Board Leader Certificate course is $99 once you become a CAI members, or you could also take that course as a non-member for $199. This course is designed to enhance leadership skills of community association boards. While these are external alternatives to the CCOC, all of these options only provide partial solutions to our COCs, but may not fully address the needs of the city's COC members. Option four is a city in-house program. We have comprehensive versus selectable service. Over the next few slides, we will review the option for an in-house program and its potential costs. Each of these components represents a key function currently available under the CCOC framework. All of these services could be included to create a comprehensive program, or the city could choose to implement only select services based on priorities and available resources. However, selecting fewer services would likely reduce the overall level of support available to COCs compared to what they currently receive. Here are the possible services for in-house. Dispute resolution only. Thorough conflict management, including investigation, mediation, and formal hearings if a new commission is established to resolve disputes within COCs. Training only. Educational programs tailored to COC boards, delivered through structured workshops and seminars, either outsourced or provided internally to enhance governance and operational capabilities. Record maintenance. Systemic tracking and maintenance of registrations, fees, and compliance documentation for COC organizations, ensuring an organized and efficient administrative process. Partial technical assistance. Offering limited guidance on specific operational needs such as budgeting advice while excluding legal governance oversight to avoid conflicts of interest with the city. The creation of a new ordinance and commission. Developing a new city-specific legal framework and establishing a dedicated commission to oversee COC disputes and governance. This would be required for either dispute resolution or a comprehensive package and would operate independently of existing administrative bodies. Now I'm just gonna go in a little bit more in-depth on each of the selectable services and provide estimated costs. Selecting one or few of these services would require fewer resources compared to implementing a full, all-comprehensive program. Dispute resolution only. As mentioned, it would be investigation followed by mediation and then hearings as needed to resolve conflicts. The estimated staffing needs is one part-time investigator and one external legal mediator as needed. The cost estimate is $37,700 to $58,500 annually. Educational training only. Develop and deliver educational programs for COC boards. Training could be outsourced to organizations like CAI or accessed for free through the CCOC as it is currently available even without membership. The cost estimate would be $0 if outsourced, or possibly $5,000 to $15,000 annually if brought in-house for material, staffing, workshops, and speakers. Partial technical assistance. Governance. Would be unable to provide legal governance due to city conflict of interest. But we would be able to provide partial technical assistance regarding operations with one external certified public accountant hourly as needed. The cost estimate would be $4,500 to $22,500. Record maintenance only. Tracking registrations, fees, and compliance. Cost estimate is $2,000 to $5,000 annually for administrative overhead. Creation of a new ordinance and commission. Develop a COC-specific code establishing a city-specific legal framework to define and regulate operation of the CCOCs within Gathersburg. This code would ensure consistency and provide clear guidelines tailored to the city's needs, independent of Montgomery County's Chapter 10B. Forming a new oversight body. Creating a dedicated city commission to oversee COC matters, including dispute resolution, governance oversight, and enforcement of the newly established code. This body would ensure accountability, equitable management, and support for COCs while addressing city-specific concerns. As Eric eloquently coined them, they would be known as the GCCOC. The cost estimate listed?
We might be able to do better than that.
The cost estimate listed for this is TBD because it largely depends on legal and administrative needs. Drafting of a new ordinance requiring collaboration with city attorneys and staff, but potentially utilizing existing resources. Commission structure. Determining the size, composition, and operational requirements of a new oversight body, such as possible stipends for commission members or administrative support. Operational integration. Establishing the commission's workflow, meeting schedules, and ongoing responsibilities may require additional resources, though initial costs could be minimized by leveraging existing city staff and infrastructure. To clarify, the partial technical assistance of the city would be unable to offer legal governance assistance a little bit more due to the direct conflict of interest as governance-related guidance such as drafting bylaws or overseeing elections present a conflict of interest for the city. To avoid any perceived or actual conflicts, a CCOC would require COC members to seek external resources to obtain these services. Now I just want to go over the estimated budget breakdown for an in-house program. These estimate figures do presume the city would take advantage of the CCOC's free training for non-members. Staffing needs and cost. One part-time investigator proposed if the certain parts of the programs are brought in-house at current service levels. Would be $35,000 to $45,000 annually, based on investigator salary prorated for part-time work. One external mediator proposed to handle dispute resolutions for 12 to 15 cases annually, which is an estimated time commitment of 1.5 to 3 hours per case. That would be estimated as $2,700 to $13,500 annually, based on mediator fees ranging from $150 to $300 per hour. One external certified public accountant proposed to provide technical assistance for governance and operations for 12 to 15 cases annually, with an estimated time commitment of 2.5 to 5 hours per case. It's estimated at $4,500 to $22,500 annually, based on CPA fees ranging from $150 to $300 per hour. The operational costs are estimated $2,500 to $5,000 annually for engagement, outreach, and software. The total estimated budget is $44,700 to $86,000 annually at the current service levels. I do want to point out that these are, there are considerations for the potential increased caseload, which would require scaling resources to address an increased caseload and require significant investments in staffing, resources, and infrastructure. This will not, this would include transitioning part-time roles to full-time or hiring additional staff, which would proportionally raise the program cost. Additionally, it is important to note once again that the CCOC could modify its policy at any time in the future and potentially discontinue offering free training to its non-members. I just wanted to go over a cost comparison and possible implications of an in-house program. The current 69.73% participation at $5 per household contribution is estimated at $49,770. This would partially offset the estimated $44,700 to $86,000 annual cost for an in-house program. If the fee is increased to $6.50 per household, the county's current rate, the projected revenue would increase to $91,500, which would offset an in-house cost if 100 participation, 100% participation is achieved. At the $6.50 fee, with the city's current participation level, we would have approximately $63,700. There are a couple of things to consider about creating an in-house program. First, the city would face a few limitations. Even if we were to charge the same as the $6.50 per household rate that the county does, we wouldn't have access to some of the resources they offer. For example, free training programs for COC boards. and the financial assistance programs for things like common area enhancements and critical repairs. Another consideration is the fee itself. If the city charges a fee similar to the county's but can't provide the same level of resources or support, residents might feel they aren't getting the same value and could create a perception of inequity. These cost overview highlights financial considerations based on current data, but does not account for all potential variables such as changes in participation rates or fluctuations in caseloads, or if the CCOC changes its policy on training. Again, implementing any type of in-house program, whether selective, services, or more comprehensive, would likely require up to twelve months for full establishment and operation. This timeframe is necessary to enhance and ensure that adequate staff, resources, and a city ordinance and a dedicated commission is created and a well-defined process are in place to effectively serve the city's common ownership households. Next, I wanted to provide a couple of jurisdictional comparisons. Currently, the city of Rockville does participate in the CCOC. They initially opted into the CCOC program in 2010 with a five-year sunset provision. This participation did expire in January twenty-first, 2015, but was reinstated unanimously by the City of Rockville Council on July twentieth, 2015. The decision to rejoin was driven by recognition of the CCOC's value at the time, providing Rockville residents access to dispute resolution services, mediation, and hearing panels. Recently, the city of Rockville has inquired with the city about the type of reports we've received from the CCOC. After personally communicating with the housing program manager and the assistant city manager, they did not share any additional concerns they had with the CCOC and referenced that their city council had been asking them for data on number in cases. The current caseload for the city of Rockville over the past four years is as follows. In 2021, they had twelve cases. In 2022, they had three cases. In 2023, they had two cases. And in 2024, they had zero cases. They also do have fewer COCs with thirty-two condominium associations and cooperatives and thirty-five homeowner associations, for a total of sixty-seven COCs, which is about a forty percent less COCs than the city has. The city of Tacoma Park also participates in the CCOC, but I do not currently have any data from them as to their caseload or any concerns. The city of Frederick does not have a dedicated CCOC or participate in any other similar programs. Their residents are typically guided to seek assistance through state resources, private legal counsel, or the Maryland State's Attorney Office. I just wanted to review a couple of the key considerations for the council's discussion. Each option presented today comes with its own set of benefits and challenges. This body's decision will shape the city's approach to supporting its common ownership communities moving forward. Just want to provide a brief recap of what I discussed today. The CCOC does consolidate essential services under one program, including dispute resolution, training, technical assistance, and financial assistance while leveraging county resources. Opting out without a replacement would return the city to pre-2021 inefficiencies, leaving COC residents without centralized or accessible support mechanisms. External options are fragmented and may not adequately address the needs of the city's COCs. An in-house program would involve a financial and staffing investments from the city. While replicating an established county program, the city may face challenges in matching the breadth and efficiency of services currently provided by the CCOC when functioning as intended. With that, I'd like to leave you all with a few closing considerations. The CCOC's data presented tonight reflects the past twelve months, with the last eight months them operating as a fully-staffed program. While this data provides valuable insights and may not fully capture the city's specific trends, additional evaluation may be needed to determine if the past year's caseload increase is an anomaly or a sustained trend. The mayor and council members, along with city staff, have also been encouraged to attend the next CCOC monthly meeting via Zoom on February fifth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM to gain firsthand insight into the program's operations and processes. Additionally, Neighborhood Services, Landlord-Tenant Investigator and I will be meeting with the CCOC manager, supervisor, and their other team members in two weeks to discuss how their program aligns with the city's expectations. This meeting will explore the potential for providing the city with more detailed quarterly reports and will address previously raised questions from staff and council. What are the possible next steps? This slide summarizes the options and considerations we've discussed tonight. Each option offers unique benefits and challenges, and it's ultimately up to this body to decide the best path forward for supporting the city's CCOCs. We're happy to answer any remaining questions or provide further details on the presented options.
Thank you very much, Sebastian, gentlemen. I'm going to ask a question and then I think I'm going to hand it to Neil first, but let me, let me do my question.
He might hand her anything.
Yeah. So, Sebastian, as part of the presentation, you talk, you talk about CCOC's recent moves to be able to deliver service more effectively, you know, hiring more people, expanding their services a little bit, the loan program, which I think that's a neat idea. Is, so, is it your expectation that, I mean, what brought, what brought us here, I think, are two things. One is we've gotten some feedback from the public that they've been disenchanted with the service level they've gotten from CCOC. And then, when CCOC came here to present, we were less than impressed with the presentation and then their response to our questions. I think that it's fair to say that those are really the two sort of main things that brought us here. Is it your opinion that CCOC is now on the right track and will be able to deliver services that they're supposed to be delivering? Because I was getting that, I was sort of reading that into what you were saying about their hires and their programming. What were your thoughts on that? Or, and the alternative is, this is what they're telling you. Oh, no, we're going to be able to do it better from now on because we're hiring more people, we're doing X, Y, and Z. Tell me your thoughts on this.
So again, on paper, they've done the right things. They are fully staffed. They have created new initiatives. They, I can't speak for prior staff, but they have been responsive to me anytime I've asked for data or information. Again, that doesn't speak to what's going to happen in the future. That's why I did say that we should continue to evaluate if we do decide, obviously, to remain with them. Yeah.
Would you describe yourself as optimistic? And feel free, Eric and Tom, are you, are you optimistic about the direction of the CCOC organization? Or, or not, or pessimistic? You know, are you middle of the road? Are you optimistic or pessimistic about the immediate future for CCOC's ability to deliver services? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but, but, you know, the presentation was, it seemed optimistic. I just want to get clarification.
Right, while, while I, I personally have not had any direct communications with the CCOC staff or leadership, I can only go off of what they have done, which is what Sebastian presented, which is offering this new loan assistance program for the common areas and it seems to me like they have at least reorganized and hired more personnel to provide the services. As far as how effective those, those things are going to be, I don't think we have enough information to speak to that. They have put their ducks in a row to potentially provide enhanced services or adequate services. But aside from, from that, I don't have any personal knowledge or information as to how effective that's going to be.
Okay, thank you.
I will add again that as far as Neighborhood Services, we've not received a concern over the past seven months regarding the CCOC. I don't know if any of you have.
I don't, I don't know how many, the, the, the time, the last time I.
I mean, we've gotten in the council on the communities, we got several of them.
Fair point. But I don't know if they're new or from, if they were generated in the last seven months. I don't know. Tom, were you going to add to this or no?
I was just going to add that cautiously optimistic, but it's too early to tell.
Okay. And then one more question. If the city were to create an in-house program to replace CCOC, you mentioned that the city would have to develop its own training program. Wouldn't, would there not be some opportunity to partner with the county and get their, their materials? Or are they going to, are they going to get proprietary, but at least at the beginning? I'm sure if we were to create our own program, we'd, we'd look at the materials, maybe we can use them at first, and then we'd say, oh, we want to produce our own stuff. I don't know, but wouldn't there be some opportunity, there's materials out there. Why do we have to reinvent the wheel?
No, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I did say, I, I was trying to say that we could use their training programs in the beginning because they do offer that to even its non-members.
Okay. All right, cool. That's what I thought about that. Okay. Thank you. We're going to Neil first. Go ahead, Neil.
Okay, so I'd like to start with a few questions on the information in the presentation. So you have two slides, one showing that there were thirteen cases and what the results were, and the second on what the issues were. Is there a way to tie those together? Do we know which ones were resolved out of the list of cases, or is that not information that we have?
That is not something I can provide to you tonight, but I can definitely tie those together. I didn't break it down that, to that.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting to know what types of things get resolved and which things don't. In terms of the loan fund that they provide, does that part of money come out of the dues or whatever we're calling it that they collect? So I see that there's, that they collect about, just shy of a million dollars a year. And they have salaries of nine hundred and ten thousand. So does that mean that there's ninety thousand available for a loan fund, or is it, is that a separate?
I was made to understand that they were using funds from the county outside of their revenue for those loan initiatives.
Okay, so there's really not a great limitation on that, at least as far as the ninety thousand dollars, which doesn't seem like a lot for that sort of thing. All right, that's, that's good. So, so the final question is the county, the CCOC of the county's authority for conclusion is, is basically mediation. They can't, they can't impose fines, they can't force a party to do something. They can say, here's what we think the, the result should be. And then if the parties don't agree, they go to court. Is that correct?
So, as far as the actual county code is concerned, the failure to register, if you're a COC and you fail to register with the CCOC, it's considered a Class A violation, which is essentially a municipal, a county infraction, not a municipal infraction, that with a maximum fine of, of a thousand dollars. Initial offense would be five hundred dollars. So the county has a enforcement process similar to that of the municipal infractions. On top of that, they adopt some of the consumer protection remedies that local governments have, which include cease and desist orders, injunctions, subpoena powers, and again, county infraction, the county infraction process. So they, they do have enforcement.
Okay, that's good, good to know. So, so looking at the many services they provide, and I'm familiar with some of the alternatives as well, particularly with the Community Associations Institute. I've, I've partaken of a number of their courses and materials over the years when I was involved in, in my HOA. Acquired a number of their books and other publications that hopefully still sit in the Kentlands HOA library. I found them to be very useful and insightful. So in terms of the training piece, I've not been wildly impressed with the training materials that the county provides. I have to say, we have some expertise up here at the dais. I think four of us have come out of leadership positions in HOAs, so I would feel comfortable that that we could improve on that, whether we do it with us at the dais or just put together an initiative to go find better material. I'm sure it's out there. And I don't mean to be pejorative about lawyers, but the material is very lawyerly. It's very much about fiduciary duty and not very much about the nuts and bolts about how you actually manage your community effectively, properly. So, I was talking to Frank Johnson today in my regular get-together with him and just happened to bring up the subject of the tonight's meeting. And I had not realized that state law allows a local government like us to create our own organization that has enforcement ability. And I think the key to me and all of this is, is making sure that we can make, that we can ensure that common ownership communities, community associations can actually do the right thing, that they they publish their information publicly that is, that is under law required to be public, that they hold elections in a fair and open manner, et cetera, et cetera. So, and, and honestly, so let me take the next point as a question to you. How different is the, is what's needed here from what you do in the landlord-tenant side of Neighborhood Services today? From my perspective, it doesn't feel that much different. We've got two parties to a contract related to living quarters and I mean, it's obviously a little bit different, but wouldn't it be something where what we see is a relatively small number of cases here where we could put a pretty straightforward system together with a, I mean, for thirteen cases a year, a fraction of an FTE would seem appropriate and have somebody that, just like you do investigating today, investigate a situation, see what's going on and come to a conclusion without putting all this extra, what strikes me as being extra mechanisms in place. I mean, I'm just wondering why we can't keep it much simpler than what the county has done.
So, the answer to that is fair. The short answer is that there's case law that distinguishes, expressly distinguishes the fact that's common ownership community disputes are in fact different than landlord-tenant disputes. The long answer is, is it starts with the, the HOA Act and the condominium act. And those acts have specific provisions in them that prohibit a municipality such as the city from an acting law, from an acting A law that imposes different, or certain prohibitions or restrictions on HOAs and condominium associations that are not imposed on, quote, "property of similar character." The county's Chapter 10B, which is what the CCOC is, is under, applies to the term of art that's used as a common ownership community, which is defined to not only include homeowners' associations, but condominium associations as well as cooperative housing projects. In nineteen ninety-three, the, the Chapter 10B survived a constitutional attack. The community association that was involved, there was actually over, over fifteen associations that it was a class that argued the county violated the anti-discrimination statutes that are in part of the HOA and the condominium act, since 10B did not include apartment complexes, right? In, in its COC definition, the court ruled in favor of the county and explained that one of the primary reasons that the statute survived judicial scrutiny was due to the fact that apartment complexes apartment complexes feature technical insistence and dispute resolution that is markedly different than COCs. And there is a difference between the relationship between landlord and tenants and COC board members and the constituents of those COCs. Speaking in context of this discussion, in order to avoid a potential successful attack in the future on the city's hypothetical COC ordinance that mirrors the county's CCOC, it would be necessary to ensure that disputes involving COCs are not included within the powers of COLTA. COLTA is an administrative body that is primarily tasked with going over, reviewing, presiding over landlord-tenant disputes, which includes apartment complexes, which includes entities that are not COCs. And by allowing COLTA to review COC complaints, the dispute resolution processes for landlord- and tenant disputes and COC disputes would be administratively commingled and give rise to the presumption that landlord-tenant disputes are similar to CCOC disputes. And I believe commingling those two types of disputes would invite potentially successful constitutional attacks on a prospective city ordinance that mirrors the county's CCOC, if that makes sense.
So would we need to set up a separate?
We would need, it would be advisable to not include CCOC disputes within the COLTA framework.
I don't think I suggested using COLTA, but I understand that that's part of the normal process in neighborhood services today. I was wondering if we couldn't just have staff adjudicate these. Is that not appropriate under state law?
That would be part of the buffet of options, right? A mediation, conciliation process. If this body wants to move that step forward and establish a commission or similar body that has the ability to render administrative decisions that are appealable to circuit court, that would have to be established through a commission or board that has that ability. But the mediation, conciliation aspect, yes, that can be done. I would venture to say that simply providing a mediation and conciliation process without the additional benefit of actually having those quasi, without having those come before a quasi judicial body, would essentially place all the residents in the same position that they are in anyway.
I understand. I'm looking for something with some teeth.
Right.
And just want to understand how that could be structured. Okay, I think I'll leave it at that for now and let my colleagues have a chance to chime in.
Rob Wu.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I really do appreciate the responsiveness that you guys have shown in both addressing, I won't say frequent concerns, but I'll say concerns raised about the current regime for common ownership communities, as well as presenting the various options for us to deliberate on. So thank you for that. Two questions. One is on what Neil was just talking about. Actually, it's an issue that Neil raised, and then obviously, once he raises it, it's me, I jump down a rabbit hole. That's what happens. But before that, I was looking at the HOA Act. And the HOA Act basically says, as Eric, you were just saying, we can't pass any local laws that are discriminatory against HOAs just because they're a development. And then there's some exceptions within that about how counties can do dispute resolution. I can't find where we would have the authority to enact a board that would essentially discriminate against HOAs because they are a development. So that's exactly what CCOC does, but they have a state-level legislative exception to do so. Are we able to do a CCOC at the city level under the HOA and not be in conflict with the HOA Act?
It's mine, I'm not, I.
I'm just.
Right, no, I'm just.
Just looking into it, because I couldn't find it, but that's not saying.
I'm not familiar with any statute within the Homeowners' Association Act or the Condominium Act that specifically authorizes the county to establish something similar to the CCOC but doesn't allow a municipal government to do the same.
Yeah.
I can research that a little bit more.
Yes, if we could, 11B-103 has the non-discrimination provision in it, and it has the exception that allows counties to do it. And so I just want to make sure that we are on a firm legal footing if we want to go that way. The other thing was what Neil raised to me, and I guess this is a conversation Neil had with Frank, which is interesting to me, which is in the HOA Act, it provides for provisions for enforcement of consumer protections. And it actually gives plenary authority to the state attorney general, but then it allows local governments to enforce as well through ordinances. Now recognizing that, and I was trying to wrap my head around this after Neil had mentioned it to me, is that the scope of the authority seems a little bit different than if we were to, what the CCOC does, but it also has some overlap in some important areas. And so my read of it is that the consumer protection and the HOA Act defines consumer in a peculiar way that makes it applicable to a lot of the stuff that we're seeing under CCOC, such as if the board doesn't meet. And so we had a complaint when we first were considering this. It says, you know, our board hasn't met, they're derogatory in their duties. That's a direct violation of the HOA Act, and it would give consumers standing with respect to those that we could then enforce. So that's one that I think, you know, these things where there's a specific obligation under the CCOC. So like election science or compostings actually in there as well. So if an HOA were to say, you can't compost, if we were to adopt a consumer protection regime, we could then, as a code enforcement matter, come in and say, no, that is a violation of the HOA Act of their consumer protections. We are now, as a matter of code enforcement, as opposed to going to a commission, going to assess a violation against you, and as we would, you know, any kind of code violation. So that's very interesting to me, and I commend Neil and Frank for really digging deep into the HOA Act to look at that. And I think that there's a way, if we can flesh that out and figure out what the meets and bounds of the authority are, I think there's a lot of stuff that can be handled, not through a commission, but through an enforcement matter. The one thing that I don't think that consumer protection mechanism would protect against is if there is a established HOA bylaws and there's a violation of that. And so that's not, that's a procedure that isn't really spelled out as a, you know, if a HOA enacts bylaws, says you can't do something, a complainant then comes in and says, well, this isn't, I don't like that, or you're enforcing it arbitrarily or something like that. There's a separate dispute mechanism resolution procedures in the HOA Act that basically goes from complainant to a board meeting at the HOA to circuit court. And so those I don't think could be addressed as consumer protection issues, but Frank is our legal expert, and Eric, you're our legal expert as well. And so if there is a there there where we can put in place a consumer protection ordinance regime that would allow staff to enforce a lot of these issues and resolve a lot of these issues through ordinance rather than a commission, I'd be in favor of that. Part two, if we do have the statutory authority to implement a commission, you know, I, way back in the day when we first had this presented to us, the estimates on the amount of pull a alternate body would have because of the anticipated complaints at the time, which I think they said was about 400 a year, Kevin, it did not pan out. So I'm kind of with what I think Neil was going with, you know, is the juice worth the squeeze with the CCOC because of the level of engagement we have? Can we figure out a regime that would be successful within our own jurisdiction that would address the concerns? And so, you know, back at the time, and I'll repeat again, my big concern was that skip from HOA to circuit court is a barrier for, probably for HOAs, but certainly for homeowners. And having an administrative way to resolve these things in between, I think, is very important. So however we get there, that's what I'm in favor of. I'm not seeing the value that I saw in the CCOC as it was originally presented at the time we opted in.
Neil, were you going to, before I go, were you going to say something or no?
Yeah, so that's the consumer protection laws. Yep.
Of the condominium act. It's Section 11-130, Paragraph D, on page 56 of the act.
All right, we don't need to get into the pages.
I'm just saying, 56 pages in the act is a little frightening, but anyway.
We'll go to Jim first, since I see your hand first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate the questions and comments of my colleagues, and thank you for all the information. I had similar questions as far as the jurisdiction that we have as a municipality, particularly because the state tends to leave municipalities out quite often when they're writing some of these and only focus on counties. So I think it would be very important for us to clarify where we are. And I also, I agree with my colleagues on, you know, whether this can be done through staff and not a commission, particularly if the amount of workload that we're seeing is not panning out to what was expected. Also, I was intrigued about the, you know, the way that the HOA Act was written and, you know, not passing laws that are discriminatory against a particular type of housing. And it got me thinking about the fees that the current CCOC charges. Do we charge, and Neil brought up the idea of the similarity, but obviously there's differences with landlord-tenant disputes that staff currently gets involved in. Are there fees as far as like business licenses or whatever that we currently charge to landlords that cover some of these regulations that we manage these rental properties in the city? I ask because the regime that is set up with CCOC is charging associations for being an association so that we, so that the county could stand up this commission. Taking a step back, should, if we decide to go down this route, is this something that we should be charging common ownership communities, or should it be something that is simply a function of government in the form of its, you know, an equal access under the law? Am I making sense?
So if I could clarify.
Yeah.
As the Neil, Frank, Rob discussion about the consumer protection piece, that is, that sounds distinctly different. That would be a code enforcement mechanism, which of course, we don't necessarily charge residents for code enforcement. They pay taxes for that service, along with lots of other services. The other, the other pieces, though, I think are value-add, which is why you kind of have a fee structure in place.
When you say value-add, as far as the?
So training, mediation, you know, anything beyond sort of the basic code enforcement. And if I caught it correctly, because this was my first time hearing it tonight as well, the code enforcement is also narrowly construed. So some of these other disputes that come up, some of them were in the presentation that are within the HOA governance structure itself, we wouldn't be able to address via code enforcement.
No, and that makes sense. I mean, and looking at your presentation and the fact that, you know, some of these other services are available through other means, you know, the training is available for free elsewhere, you know, even the fact that they've added, you know, this loan program. I mean, the city currently has the Frederick Felton matching grant program that's available to communities, you know, for certain types of projects. So there are opportunities available to common ownership communities outside of the mediation. And I think that really was the biggest alarm bell that was out at the outset. I mean, I wasn't on the council when this happened, but it was certainly something we were all discussing. I think I might have either been just coming off my HOA board, or I know it was a big discussion.
You testified.
I definitely testified about it. And obviously, there were a small number of communities that were really driving the challenges here, right? Like, it wasn't a widespread issue that, you know, you said about, we have 100 and so common ownership communities in the city. You know, we're only getting 13 at most complaints, and they're scattered about the city. Understanding that, as my colleague mentioned, if you have to get lawyers involved when you have a particular issue with the HOA, it does get expensive. It can get expensive. Part of the reason I ended up on my HOA was because of challenges that we had with our previous board. I will just say to the public, this particular issue is really become forefront because you have people that get into positions of authority, and sometimes they abuse that authority. And it becomes incumbent upon the ownership, the residents of particular communities to be involved. You know, you need good people on your HOA board. We can all tell you, sometimes it is a thankless job, but if you don't have good people standing up, then you end up with these issues that end up having to be resolved by these kinds of boards. So as just a plea to the community, you know, we don't want these issues to have to come before these kinds of boards. So if you think there's an issue in your neighborhood, get involved, run for your board. That being said, I don't think that the county program has been working. It certainly was not what was advertised. I agree that what we saw here was not sufficient for what a government body should have been presenting to another government body. Whether we opt out entirely or we find a staff solution, I'm open to options there, but I don't think what we have works. And I do think we need to make a change in either of those directions, and I think I could be persuaded in either direction. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to Jamil.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation. A few questions and some comments. You spoke earlier to Councilmember Wu in terms of authority deltas or differences between the county and the municipality. Just to clarify in my mind, anything the county can do, we can do?
Better.
Better. No. So when you're going through state statutes and legislation, if it, sometimes it specifies, sometimes it doesn't. If it refers to local government, you can take that to mean both county and municipality, but typically, you'll see whether or not it specifies this is for a county, or this applies to county governments or municipal governments. But if I see that it applies to local governments, I take that to mean both county and municipal.
So what I'm trying to get to is that if we were to opt out of the CCOC and either created, you know, this consumer protection ordinances or created our GCCOC, there's not like, hey, these five enforcement things the county can do, we're handicapped and then we can't do to service our resident? The answer is no.
Not as far as the distinguish, the thing which meant between county and local and municipal.
So maybe just like a threshold question, I think, I don't know if Councilmember Wu and Harris and McNulty mentioned, like, I think, I do remember being on a board of an HOA when this was being debated and giving testimony in opposition to joining the CCOC. And now that I sit here, I continue that consistency. I prefer home rule, so I prefer for us to have something we do. So the sooner we can leave the CCOC, the better. I take your point, Sebastian, in terms of maybe they staffed up or created something, and maybe that lasts for six months, and then staff leaves, they go to different jobs, the loan fund gets moved or something with the budget, and then we're back here again trying to address that. I'd rather we be accountable. That's what, you know, we live in the city and prefer to give that service. I'm neutral or positive in terms of, do you do a light GCCOC with the consumer protections? Need to learn more about that, but. Need to learn more about that, but, um, yeah, those are what would be my comments. Leave as soon as possible and create the mechanism that makes sense, best for us.
Thanks, Jamil, go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, all three of you, for this presentation and confusing the living daylights out of me. Mostly Neil and Rob, though, so. But one question I have is in regards of enforcement. So the delta that exists for, because it's not optional to join the CCOC for common ownership communities and the, the delta that exists, wha- is there a penalty? If, if this were to come our way and we were to manage our own, is there a penalty? Is it not being enforced? How do we know who belongs, who doesn't belong? And, and what's the, the impact to a person who's, who, who doesn't pay or isn't signed up or?
So as far as, uh, so as, as far again, as the county is concerned, the, the failure to register with the CCOC is a class A violation, which again is, is similar to that of, of municipal infraction, where an initial offense is five hundred dollars. That's, this is all what's baked into the code and it's presumably being enforced. I don't, as far as how much they're being enforced, I mean, sixty-nine percent, point seven-three. That doesn't seem like.
Exactly.
There's much enforcement going on.
Right.
But there is a provision within the county code that makes it a violation to not register. And again, that initial offense would be five hundred dollars sent to the, uh, the governing body of the, of, of the COC. That similar provision could be baked into a prospect of hypothetical GCCOC. It is in the county, but it doesn't seem like it's being enforced.
Okay, and it leads me to the question, Sebastian, your numbers that showed what the, what the revenue would look like for the city if we were at sixty-nine, the sixty-nine percent. But should we include? You have a hundred percent scenario in there as well, but should we also include that for, for the twenty-nine, whatever percent that aren't the penalty? Because we would enforce the penalty that's now, because that comes back as revenue to us, that penalty?
The municipal infraction fine?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be.
Okay, the courts don't need it up?
No, no.
Okay. So it, just the thought that we bake that into our, our numbers as well. And that also, if, you know, under our, um, um, management, it would, we would have to bake in enforcement as well.
Correct.
As part of, right.
So, so yes, we, we would need to anticipate enforcement as one of the many services that we would take on in-house. We typically don't budget for, um, municipal infractions, right? That's a. I, I would, I would.
That's usually.
I would recommend against.
No, I don't, I don't want to budget for.
Well, you said sort of bake it into the number, so that, to me, I, I thought you meant forecasting collecting five hundred dollars.
Enforcement personnel.
Right, right.
Okay.
For, i- in terms of cost of how we're going to enforce it. Because if I look at these numbers of five bucks for the sixty-nine percent, that's the calculation that we, that we did. There's money on the table there, you know, if, if that's not being captured either through enforcement or the five bucks that they should pay because they're members. I'm not saying to bake it in, but it needs to be recognized in terms of our, our operations, that there's money missing.
True, and, and there's, there's, there would be effort and money required to.
Yes.
Engage in enforcement.
Correct.
Which could, uh, you know, we can guess at why the county or the CCOC has or has not, uh, moved forward with enforcement. What, what that also means is our communities, as well as others across the county, have been supplemented by the county budget with the CCOC, is something else to consider.
Okay, all right, just that, that's a cost that, that we, well, okay.
Jamil, then Jim.
Yeah, just a clarification. So the five dollars, we were kind of, it's like a deal was stroke, struck and we, um, kind of got it for a little bit more. Six fifty is the current price, which was an increase from the five dollar when originally it was this cost. And I think it's maybe eight dollars or something else that it might go to. We, we're speculating a little bit, but it's likely not going to stay at six fifty for the next fiscal, next fiscal year in the county. So that's something to keep in mind in terms of our thinking and timing for if we're going to stay or how long until we divide our own thing, because that might be another, uh, increase. I think we would, we would do a much better job in enforcement and compliance. The county has some challenges in the back tax, this, there's a whole litany of things that the IG has written of things that get passed and just don't get enforced, so.
Jim.
Uh, Lisa brought the issue of the registration and the enforcement and getting compliance, people registering. And the reason that that is an issue is the cost to the associations. If it's a part of, and that's why I brought this question up. If it's just a function of what government does, then we're not requiring HOAs to register. It's just something that is there and if a homeowner has an issue, they come to the city. So if we aren't charging communities for this because we ha- we decide that we're just going to offer the dispute resolution and the other pieces are available through other means, then perhaps we don't require registration, we don't charge our communities extra and treat them differently than other properties. And then we don't have to worry about that kind of enforcement because it's just part of what we do as a government. Yes, it's going to cost the eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year, which is like a tenth of a pers- percent of our annual budget. But it's something that, you know, it, it takes away that, okay, now we got to make sure that everybody complies and we got to get that every, it's just what we do. It's, okay, you're a common ownership community, you live in one, you've got an issue, you can come to the city, period, end of story. As an option.
But in that, in that scenario, are we farming out other, like, are we farming out training?
Yes.
Right, so it removes the one-stop shopping.
It does, but, but we can refer people to that. I mean, the CAI and, and, you know, those, those programs are existing. We bring in other partners for other programs all the time. So it'd be just like, if you have, you need training, here you go. You know, because it's really, the training's going to be aimed at the boards, right? Making sure that they're doing it the right way. The dispute resolution is for the residents, right? They're the ones that are having issues with the board. So I'm less concerned about being a one-stop shop because, you know, you get on the board, you know, I did not get training. I learned from the people that were on, um, I, I wasn't aware of any of this training and then started finding out that this was a thing. These are resources that we can make available to boards through these other services. It isn't something that needs to come from the county or from, from the city.
All right, um, Neil, before we go to the public.
So I have a, first a question for Lisa. Was that me and Rob were being confused or we were confusing you?
It was, um.
You don't have to answer that.
Helpfully, it was helpfully confused, you hurt my brain.
Okay, sorry.
It was good, it was good.
Okay. So, uh, I'm, I'm perusing the condominium act, which is a dangerous thing for.
So much.
So I, so the condominium act, as far as I've gotten through it, and that's only about halfway through so far, it requires certain things that are pretty normal. It requires the, uh, association to have bylaws. It requires them to hold elections. It requires them to prepare and submit a budget to the owners and so forth. Would we, if we took on the authority, the consumer protection authority under this act, would we be able to tell them to enforce their, their own bylaws? Or violation of the bylaws would be a consumer issue or not?
I would have to review the Consumer Protection Act a little bit more to provide you with a confident answer.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering how far, you know, what kind of issues would be possible to, to deal with? I presume that.
I would suggest that in terms of enforcing their own bylaws, that that would probably be beyond what we could handle.
Okay.
Directly, most likely.
Not a, not a surprise, but, but it, but the fact that they're supposed, that they need to provide all the owners with a budget would be, I would think, something under consumer protection because that's not part of the bylaws, that's part of state law.
Exactly.
All right, understood. I mean, thinking about this for a while, uh, I would be, so I don't understand the need for charging HOAs for access to the system if we can keep it simple. Hopefully we can keep it much simpler than, than what the county does. I would also suggest thinking about a couple of things. One is the, the, the training a- aspect, um, strikes me as being very valuable in that if it's done right, then you greatly reduce the number of incidents, right? If the board knows what they're supposed to do, which is one source of trouble when they just make stuff up. We have, aside from us here on the dais and we're, we're probably too busy for this idea, but we, there are probably a lot of people who, who, uh, have been on, uh, HOA and condo boards and maybe we could get a volunteer committee together to provide assistance to folks out there. Just to spit-palling some ideas, this one occurred to me this afternoon. I was thinking of volunteering myself, but again, I don't think I want to do that at this juncture. But, well, kind of like the Service Corps of Retired Executives have a Service Corps of Retired, uh, Common Ownership, probably much longer acronym than we would need, but you get the idea. Keep it simple, right? This is, this is a group that had their, got their hands dirty and, and knows the, the do's and don'ts and how things actually work, that could probably provide some, some assistance and would probably enjoy being useful and sharing their expertise. So I'm just, I'm just trying to keep it much less, sim- much less complicated than what the county did because I, I think for the number of cases that we're looking at, we don't need something at that level of structure and that level of expense.
All right, with that, um, I want to go to the public. If there's anybody here from the public, we have one member of the public here. If you want to testify, otherwise I'm going to look at, um, you want to come on, come on up. Okay, so, uh, as the rules always are, state your name and address or neighborhood for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes. If you have more than three minutes worth of comments, use your three minutes and send us the rest in writing. Please go right ahead.
Good evening, I'm Salil Pareek from the Park Summit Community on Woody Branch Road. Thank you very much for your research, Mr. Andion, there was some surprising data in your presentation. I've been on the Board of Directors for Park Summit for the last six months. And I can tell you that it doesn't give you the voice that you think it might. Sorry, I have a bunch of disorganized thoughts here. The CCOC training is fresh in my mind because I just went through it. It's not particularly helpful and it's badly organized and in a very inaccessible format. It's video only, you can't read it. There's a process, bringing a complaint to the CCOC is very process-heavy. You almost need to be legally inclined to, to, uh, to, to deal with it. There's also a filing fee of fifty dollars for every complaint, which is a deterrent, especially when you're trying to, when your complaint is that you're trying to make the HOA board follow their own bylaws. And I think there is a provision where if you lose the case, you could be resp- you could be held responsible for legal fees. I was astonished by the thirteen-case number, uh, that there were only thirteen cases from Geithersburg brought before the CCOC last year. And I, I kind of wonder if that's because of the filing fee. The process is not streamlined, it's, and it's not informal either. And since it's not binding, there is an inherent power imbalance there where the HOA can just ignore you, even if you, even if the panel or the mediator sides with you. And some of the, some of the, uh, some of the disputes that people are reluctant to bring to the CCOC are things like election conduct and bylaws not being followed. And there is generally an impression of outsized, uh, power by the community managers that are hired by the HOAs. It's almost like a regulatory capture situation. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pareek. Do we have anybody on Zoom who'd like to testify? If so, use the, the raise hand function, I'll call on you. I'm not seeing any hands go up, so thank you, thank you all. Okay, so, um, appreciate the testimony. To staff, um, we've had this conversation, I think, if I'm reading the room correctly, the council wants to focus on option four, which is opt-out and replace with some sort of city in-house program. You, there has been some, what that program exactly is, I think there's been some stabs added up here, but, but maybe there's, there's some thought you guys can give to it, give us some options as to how we might do it. There's sort of the no-cost option where we outsource some of it and we, we do some in-house. And maybe some other people feel diff- like they want to get more, the, the consumer protection, um, question has, has been there, has been posed. So I think we need, you, we're going to need some more guidance and thought on exactly how we approach this option. But I feel like, I feel like we're in option four, yeah, Jamil, go ahead.
Just a clarification for everybody. Does the county invoice the HOAs on the beginning of the fiscal year?
I, I believe so, yes.
So just something to keep in mind that, like, if there's consensus, which I think you just said there is, to exit the COC and we don't want all these HOAs to get dinged with an invoice for like two weeks later, you know, their move, there's.
Is there a cycle of July first invoice or do we know?
I can verify that, but I believe that it's still.
We might want to think of that as a constraint to have.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
That's checked before, even if we don't have a.
Correct.
Yeah.
Fully baked solution.
Correct.
Neil?
So, uh, you know, I haven't been part of this conversation, but I've heard from some of my colleagues that in conversations with the, uh, with our counterparts in the Rockville City Council, that there, there are rumblings that they're not happy either. And there's been some talk about maybe we should work together on, on a joint solution. So, uh, Tom looks dubious. But perhaps we could talk to our friends in Rockville and see if that is in fact, if they're, uh, on the same page as we are and if, uh, if there's some, uh, if, uh, extra efficiency, cost effectiveness, whatever, that, or economy of scale, that would, uh, be helpful if we com- join forces on this.
But if there's not.
Yeah.
If there's not, that's not, that would be sort of.
That's a nice to have.
I would, I would worry about just the, the jurisdiction of, of, you know, two municipalities versus, you know.
Well, on the educational side, it might make sense.
Correct.
But on the, on the enforcement side, yeah.
Yeah.
We also need more bike paths connecting.
All right, that, let's, we are going further and further afield, okay.
But are we all in consensus on the?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Exiting before they get dinged with another set of invoices?
I sense consensus up here. Lisa, I haven't heard you say that specifically, but it seems like.
Yeah, no, we would not want them to pay and then exit, right.
So in order to exit, we have to pass a, so we have to change.
A man in ordinance.
Men two-dash-ten to remove chapter ten B from the city, from city applicability. So I, I guess I'm hearing start that process as soon as possible.
I think that, that's fair. Tanisha, you look like you want to say something or no?
Nope.
Okay.
So, I'm, just for clarification, so we, FY twenty-five's been paid for those who paid.
Correct.
Okay, so the, the urgency would be before July one, twenty-twenty?
If that's when they bill.
Five, right.
For a new process system to be in place?
No, no, it's to at least take the first step, which is.
I just want to be.
Exiting.
Good clarification.
To be done with our involvement with CCOC, if we, if we have something in place, that's a bonus. But the, but I'm sensing that the higher priority is to make sure our HOAs don't get charged when we're not going to stay in CCOC.
We survive before twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, if there, is there anything that on the county side requires X number of days' notice from the city for opting out?
I do not believe there is, but I can certainly get back to everybody.
Eric, you covered that in our first.
In the first, uh.
Go around.
In the first.
Remember?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have, you have it somewhere.
Yeah, I do have it somewhere.
We'll figure all that out, okay. We'll figure all that out. Okay. Anything else from staff? Any unresolved questions from us? Okay. Well, thanks for a very productive session, and thanks for all the prep from council members. It was great. And I will remind everyone that our next meeting is on Tuesday, January 21st. It's not on the Monday because of the King holiday. So until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.